I'd like to call the October 13th Peters Township Planning Commission meeting in order. Seth, your call, please.
Mr. Magrino is not here with us this evening. This is Corbald will not be here. Mr. Selephus?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Wiley?
Here.
Mr. Kartefillis is not here, and Mr. Smith is not here.
Next on the agenda is approval of our September 15th, 2022 regular meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 15th, 2022 regular meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seth, any reports and correspondence?
No.
Any site plan subdivisions filed for review?
None.
Any suggested changes to the agenda?
No.
Any audience comments on items not on the agenda? Moving on to new business, Planning Commission recommendation, hamlet of Springdale, number five, Second Amendment 101-109, Nightbridge Drive.
In the hamlet of Springdale Plan Number Five, developed by Benjamin Marcus Holmes, the storm sewer on those five lots highlighted there on Nightbridge was not constructed in the recorded storm sewer easement. They moved the storm sewer a little further down, away from the backs of the homes, to give more buildable area behind the house. So this plan simply vacates the recorded easement and establishes a new easement in the as-built location of the storm sewer. Just one other thing to point out there, where you see in purple, the storm sewer becomes a, the storm sewer easement becomes a combined easement with the Peters Creek sanitary authorities sanitary sewer easement. So, simple vacating the recorded easement, establishing a new easement. And those five property owners there will all need to sign the plan, and I've spoken to one or two of them, and they're all in favor of it because it gives them more buildable area in their backyard. So, staff's recommending approval subject to those two conditions in my memo to you dated October 6, 2022.
Did that require excavation and relocation of this?
As they were building it, they decided to move it.
So there was no disruption to properties that were already developed?
Correct, correct. The storm sewer's in place. It's just some house cleaning that needs to take place to vacate the recorded easement and establish a new easement for storm sewer purposes.
Any Commissioner comments? Seems pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Any audience comments on this side? Hearing none. Could I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission approve a recommendation of the hamlet of Springdale Number Five, Second Amendment, with the conditions of the recommendations of staff.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye. Next on the agenda is the TA, Planning Commission recommendation for the TA Robinson, FLP Camp Lane, Plan Number One, Dash 133 Camp Lane.
The Thomas A. Robinson Family Limited Partnership is the owner of the one-and-a-half-acre parcel on Camp Lane, Address 133 Camp Lane. That is currently the home of the Arlequino Restaurant and parking lots associated with it, along with the number of freestanding structure. As part of the proposed subdivision plan, the Robinson Limited Family Partnership is seeking to slice that property into two separate parcels, separating basically right down the middle, putting the Arlequino building, which is in the blue parcel, off to the right, and then maintaining the other building within the red parcel off to the left. Within that red parcel is a parking lot not shown on the aerial. It's been recently constructed as part of the addition to the building that services, is intended to service, the Arlequino Restaurant on the blue parcel. So, as part of the subdivision plan, we're asking that they put together a parking and access easement, just to clarify that that park, those parking spaces are intended for the use of the adjacent property, and that we come to some type of agreement, even though it's all under common ownership, that outlines which parking spaces are available for which building. And those are covered in my recommendations to the Planning Commission. Other than that, these lots are consistent with the dimensional requirements of the general commercial district. You know, there's no other outstanding issues that need to be addressed. Staff is making the recommendations approval, subject to the six conditions as outlined in my October 5. And we have the survey of record here this evening to answer any questions.
Didn't some, didn't we approve something else?
We did a subdivision plan on this property last year. A portion of their parking lot was on the church property in the back, so they had to absorb a little bit of that.
It was re-
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Coming back in and doing some more work here.
All right. So this is in addition to what we already did last year?
Correct, yeah. Just would be the next version.
Would a shared parking also, if the parcel in red were to develop more parking?
Right.
Much more parking, would the shared parking include all the new parking in the future?
Likely not. You know, the parking that was built on the red parcel was designed and used for the Arlequino expansion and the restaurant itself. When they did their expansion last year, they needed X number of additional parking spaces. It was all one parcel at the time, but now with them going to split it down the middle, you know, they just have to designate those spaces as to be used for the Arlequino Restaurant. I would envision that if any additional parking spaces were needed to be constructed for the other building on the red parcel, they would probably stand alone and likely could be just used for that building. But we would, we'd cross that bridge when we
Any audience comments on this side? Seems pretty straightforward. May I take a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission recommendation for the TA Robinson, FLP Camp Lane, Plan Number One, at 133 Camp Lane, be approved in addition to the six items listed in staff's memo.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. Okay. Next up on the agenda, Planning Commission decision on the Starbucks Revised Site Plan at 465 Valley Brook Road.
This is a revised site plan approval, and Planning Commission has approval authority. Starbucks Corporation, operators of the existing Starbucks facility at 465 Valley Brook Road, is proposing to relocate their pickup window for their drive-through from the west side of the building to the southern side of the building, so the, to create more queuing. As we all know, this is a very busy Starbucks, and the queue to get to the drive-through is blocking parking in front of the building. This will increase that queue by at least two spots. The engineer designer for Starbucks is here tonight. I'll let him explain what's going on here with this plan. But as far as the township is concerned, this is not going to solve all the queuing problems there, but it's going to help. It's going to create two more spots, so anything that could be done to help the queue, we're in favor of. Mr. Moldovin's here tonight to go into a little bit further detail.
Can you please introduce yourself, give us your address? And Seth, is there still a sign up there?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Bill Moldovin. I'm here representing Starbucks Coffee Company. My address is 750 Holiday Drive, Pittsburgh, PA 15220. I'm with Kim Lee Horn.
Hey, Bill, I got a clicker right here if you'd like, please.
Yeah, sure.
As Mr. Zook had explained, we are proposing to relocate the pickup window. There will be internal renovations. I've got a few slides that show existing conditions, and then a blow-up of the site plan for you to answer any, ask any questions that I can answer. And then we've also got a detail of an advanced communication signal that we'd like to install. That was at the request of the Township Planning Department. So we've gone back and forth over the few, past few months to determine what that particular sign looks like, so that we can communicate to vehicles as they come around from a stopping point to a point where they pick up their, their order at the pickup window. So this is just a picture of entering the, the drive-through lane. The existing clearance bar will remain. It's set at eight foot, six inches right now. The existing order board will remain in place. This view is of the location of the existing pickup window. That pickup window will be bricked in and, and moved to the rear of the building. And this is an image of the rear of the building, where you see the Starbucks emblem. That will be the approximate location of the new pickup window.
The second awning?
The second awning, yes.
Is that an exit door right now?
Yes, it is an exit door.
Emergency exit?
And they will, there, there will be a new emergency exit door as part of the, the building renovations. And that building renovation plans will go through the, the proper reviews.
Does it come through us? Site plan approval, good?
No, the building, like the actual building plans?
Okay.
And those, that review has started, and we've already provided them comments.
Okay.
While you're on this slide, is that, are those gas meters right there?
They, they will be relocated as part of the renovation. This particular shot shows the, the sidewalk behind the building that serves the, the egress doors. We've talked to the planning department about maintaining at least a four-foot, a four-foot wide sidewalk for all of the, the existing egress doors, because we will be, as part of this, this renovation, we'll be cutting that sidewalk.
Apologize, it's right here.
We'll be cutting this curb and basically removing this sidewalk, and we'll maintain a four-foot sidewalk, and then we'll taper back into the existing curb as we exit the, the pickup window. And I won't go through the site plan too much here. You, you know the proximity of the, the building. We have a, a blow-up plan here. Some of the proposed improvements will have striping in this location, and a stop bar here for the patrons using the drive-through. There will also be a stop bar and a stop sign for the patrons that are using the bypass lane that goes around the building to the, to the bank's drive-through service on the opposite side of the building. Reason that we're stopping cars here is because the turning movement for these vehicles encroaches in the, the, the drive aisle of this, this bypass lane. So, the, the reason that we're, that we want to communicate to these drivers to stop here, and we've got a proposed advanced communication signal, is we don't want vehicles to leave this position until this car leaves the pickup window. So it will be a-
By example, will it be like when you're at the car wash, and you're exiting the car wash, and you wait for the green light to proceed? Is it something like-
Something like that, yes.
Not a, a bar that comes down?
It is not a bar. So this was just a quick graphic that we created. We went back and forth with the township with, you know, about what Starbucks has done elsewhere. This is not something that they've done at other stores. This is a unique situation. So, we worked with Starbucks to understand what they were willing to, to do from a manual operation standpoint. In a, in theory, it's great to think that somebody inside the store would be able to click a button when they give their order to the folks at the drive-through window, and then it would, you know, trigger a, a new message for the, for the car here to come around the corner. They'd like to, to automate it as much as possible, so we'll be putting a detection loop in the pavement at the pickup window, so that when the cars leave that pickup window, this message board, it'll be a variable message display. So-
It's totally voluntary for the person driving the car-
Absolutely.
-not to ride someone's bumper in front of them?
It absolutely is.
Fly away, say stop and go.
And, and I think that's the, you know, the, the reason that Mr. Zook said it's, it's not the perfect solution, but what this does do is it allows two additional stacking vehicles between the message board and the pickup window. And along with improvements within the, within the store to improve efficiencies, it allows Starbucks to have more time between the order and the pickup to, to process the order. So it creates a, a greater efficiency in moving cars through the drive-through lane.
So you've modeled that it'll create more throughput?
It does.
Through the drive-through?
It does.
Overall?
Yes.
On a busy day?
Yes, per hour, yes. So currently, there's, there's one car between the person at the, at the order board and the person at the pickup lane, and we'll have three cars between there. So, it's just, it's an effort to, to increase efficiency in pulling people through that drive-through lane. So at the peak hours, you'll have less time where you do have cars that, that are potentially blocking other vehicles in the, in the parking lot.
Any other audience comments on this?
I think it's a good improvement. It may not be perfect, but it's a lot better than a-
Overall, it'll, it'll help Starbucks get a little bit more throughput without creating a traffic jam around the building. I'm sure the other tenants of the building are pleased with any improvement, even though it's not tremendous. Anything is better than nothing. So it's a, I guess a win-win. I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission approve the revised site plan for the Starbucks Corporation, including the two conditions as specified by staff.
Before you second, you can second.
I will second.
I, I forgot to add, condition three, building permit approval.
For the modifications to the building?
Correct, correct. So three conditions as opposed to two.
Okay. I'll amend my motion to include three conditions, and I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Planning Commission recommendation to the zoning hearing board case 1015-22, Always Be Smiling, the applicants of Thomas A. Robinson Family Limited Partnership.
The Thomas A. Robinson Family Limited Partnership is owners of a 9.6 acre parcel of land located at 107 Valley Brook Road. This is along the Arrowhead Trail, situated between the Arrowhead Trail and Valley Brook Road. They are going before the zoning hearing board on Tuesday night, October the 18th, for three requested variances related to a site plan at the same property. While this is a 9.6 acre parcel of land, it's quite narrow in some pieces and stretches along the Arrowhead Trail for a pretty good distance. As part of the zoning hearing board application, on Tuesday night, they are requesting three variances. They're requesting, sorry, a thirteen-and-a-half foot variance, the minimum required front yard setback of 50 feet. This is along Valley Brook Road, 50-foot setback off of Valley Brook Road. A 23-foot variance, the minimum required rear yard setback of 25 feet. This would be off the property line that is directly adjacent to the Arrowhead Trail right-of-way. And a variance to allow for only a third of the required parking spaces to be paved with an asphalt pavement. This is a requirement of the Township Zoning Ordinance that all parking spaces related to site plans have to be paved with a previous, or an impervious surface, asphalt, concrete, usually asphalt. But they're requesting just a third of those. And I'll let Mike talk a little bit about that in here in detail for a second. What I want to touch on is the fact that we don't necessarily have overlapping setbacks on this portion of the property, but they're quite close to one another. It's about 90 feet in depth from Valley Brook back to the Arrowhead Trail right-of-way, and when you take those two setbacks into consideration, you're left with very little buildable area between the two of them. And so there's, there's not a lot of room here for any potential development. And I'm going to let Mike talk in, again, more detail about the anticipated use and the tenant of this facility. But in general, staff is approvable of the requested variances. The only one that we, you know, reserve a little bit of issue with is the variance to only have one-third of the parking area paved. We do think that it would be prudent to have all the required parking spaces paved, only because part of this is also to incorporate a public trailhead for parking as well. So we think that'd be valuable to have a paved surface there for trailhead users outside of those that would be using the facility Mike's going to talk about here in a little bit. But, you know, this is an opportunity for the Planning Commission, should they choose, to provide a recommendation to the zoning hearing board. And I'm going to be sending out my formal staff report and opinion to them tomorrow, ahead of our hearing next week.
Thank you, Seth. Good evening. Mike Wetzel with Victor Wetzel Associates. I also have Kristen and Dean Ubrecht with us tonight from Always Be Smiling. And as we said, we're here tonight for the variance request for the proposed interactive activity building for Always Be Smiling for the Thomas Family Limited Partnership property within the site. Just briefly-
Is this working, Seth? Give me a second, Mike.
Just real briefly, the Always Be Smiling Foundation is partnering with the Robinson Family Trust Limited Partnership, proposes the constructor 3,000 square foot activity center building dedicated to the needs of children, teens, and young adults with disabilities, health challenges, and for their families. The location of this site allows direct access to the Montour Trail without any steep grades or ramps or steps. As you know, a lot of the sites that are along either the Montour Trail or the Arrowhead Trail, there are really a lot of steep grades, bridges, ramps associated with it. The proposed activity center will allow these childrens and families the following services and activities. Trail program access to allow biking, hiking, and nature walks, seasonal activities throughout the year, horticulture programs, learn more about growing and caring for plants, cafe where teenagers and young adults can learn life skills, and then music therapy and sensory development with this proposed structure on the site. Now, as Seth mentioned, we're here tonight seeking Planning Commission's recommendation regarding three variances. The first one is the front building setback variance, and we're in the industrial district in regard to the section. The requirement is a 50-foot front yard setback. The second one would be the rear building setback variance for a 25-foot rear building setback requirement. And then, as mentioned, the parking lots, all parking lots shall be having a pervious paved service, and we're looking to pave about a third of that parking area, and we'll go into the details of each one of those. Real, real briefly, I'd like to have Kristen come up and just talk a little bit about the Always Be Smiling program.
Thanks for having us tonight. I'm Dean Ubrecht. This is my wife, Kristen. We are the co-founders of Always Be Smiling, started two years ago with the passing of our son, Bennett Ubrecht. And as we, we spoke about, we are here to create smiles for kids, families, and young adults dealing with health challenges and disabilities. This, we're excited about this. We currently do this out of the tandem connection in an active parking lot, and it's less than optimal. This activity and learning center is really a, a great asset for Peters Township, we feel, and will allow us to expand programming for a lot of kids and young adults who age out of typical school programs and then have, you know, really a gap in things to do. So I think we're, we're passionate about what we're doing, and that it is an asset. We've already talked to Peters Township school officials. We engage with South Fayette, various schools that Bennett was in attendance, are already partnered with us, doing fall activities and programming on the trail for field trips. We've had the Western Pennsylvania School for Blind. We've had Watson Institute. Bethel Park is coming. So it really is a, a regional asset for kids and families with, with special needs and health challenges. So, go ahead.
You alluded, you, there's an existing program already in operation?
Yeah, so it's our, we do adaptive bike riding on the bottom left, so we take kids out that cannot bike ride normally, and we launch out of the tandem connection.
But it's not a facility-
Correct.
It's just, you, you assemble-
Yeah, and it's, it's suboptimal. We, you know, we don't have handicap accessible bathrooms, ADA compliant. So this would really bring all that together and help us optimize our program, and really expand it into horticulture, music, you know, be-together events that, you know, aren't weather-dependent, whereas now we're doing it in outdoor pavilions. So it really brings a brick-and-mortar approach.
Do parents pay a fee to-
No, we, we do this. We do two major fundraisers throughout the year, and then the rest of it is, you know, donations that we receive, but it's all free for the families and participants. I don't know if this came up, but they did appear before council, and council was very enthusiastic. If you spend two minutes with these people, they're the two most dedicated people I've ever met in my life. They're not even touching what they really do. So, again, but nonetheless, I wanted you to note the council was supportive of their efforts.
Yeah, you spoke at our Rotary Club and got very good information for your great, great organization.
Yeah, thank you.
You mentioned about the parking lot, or Seth, that only two-thirds would be paved.
Yeah, one of the variances they're seeking is to only pave one-third of the required parking spaces.
And my, after hearing and, and understanding who would be using this, would that be, make it more difficult if it's, if it's gravel or something like that with wheelchairs or-
Potentially, but the, of the parking spaces that they are proposing to pave, it's the minimum number of required accessible spaces, and I think we're adding a little, a couple extra on, yeah. So at minimum, the spaces that Mike's proposing as part of this that are accessible would be paved.
And it, I would assume some of the children who would be participating would be dropped off, not having to park and be wheelchared or-
Yeah, and we have some additional slides that we want to go through in regard to the presentation of the, of the variances. So, the slide here is the existing site location, Valley Brook Road right along into here, the access up to Hidden Brook through this portion of the site, and access into the site is located right through here, where Mr. Robinson has several outbuildings through here. And access to the site is this long area into here, which is already existing gravel all the way up to the end of the property through this portion of the site. When we look at the property, once again, as Seth mentioned, the property does wrap around, and it's 9.6 acres in size in, in the industrial district. What was kind of interesting when we first started the review with staff and the site, oh, Mr. Robinson had under the county, the area where the Montour Trail, which is located through here, was, was under his name in regard to the family partnership. And he also owns the big acreage back along through this portion through continued review with staff. It was determined that really Peters Township owns the, this section of the, of the Montour Trail, even though Mr. Robinson's been paying taxes on it and maintaining it for 18 years.
I want to clarify, he's been paying like 20 bucks a year, so I don't think he's been paying-
It's all in the presentation. So, but once again, you know, surrounding site, Mr. Robinson owns the larger parcel back along through here, Queen of Heaven Cemetery back through this section. This is all homeowners association for Hidden Brook through here, really the steep slope, and then Brush Creek through this section. And then Mr. Robinson also owns the property over, over and through here. There's an existing gravel parking area right in through here for, for trail access within the site. And really, when we look a little bit closer to the site, once again, you can see there's existing tree buffer along Valley Brook Road, and there's about a 16 to 18-foot elevation change that takes place along and through here, and where we do have the Montour Trail located in this portion of the site. And once again, the existing gravel that works its way all the way up through about this portion. Just some photos of the site, because it really does lend the site where the location is. This is the upper area where the building location is. This is all the existing gravel that's there. The Montour Trail through this section, already existing access points through this site. This is where Valley Brook Road and the buffer that takes place in the odd-shaped triangle is, is where the building location would be. It's been staked out in the field. In fact, the council staff have already been out to review this location. in this section. This is an area where we would be paved in regard to the parking area. And just some additional parking, this is looking away from the building. This would be all asphalt paved, but really beyond this point is where we're looking to be able to keep the existing gravel as it exists here today through this portion. This is the upper portion of the site where we have some proposed walking garden areas that we'll go over real briefly in regard to the site. Once again, the building location through, through this portion, its relationship to the trail with the site. Once again, the buffer and the flat area that this area is being maintained and built upon. This would be, once again, the parking area. This is where they would have their access for their, the bikes to be able to get on the trail. Once again, you can never find this particular type of access anywhere in most cases in Western Pennsylvania as an ideal portion of the site to gain access for Always Be Smiling.
Would the trail parking, people parking to go on the trail and for this activity center use a common parking lot?
Well, there would be an area that's going to be dedicated for the Always Be Smiling area, but really, the requirement of this building is to have 30 parking spaces. It's one of these typical retail sections. It might be a fundraiser event where they're going to need the 30 parking, but it's very seldom that they'll ever have 30. We have probably over 50 parking spaces that are available within this whole general area. You can actually kind of see in a couple of photos where it's already backed off, but residents will be able to be able to drive in and be able to have access to the trail through this. So, it's adding another nice component for additional trail access for the residents.
So, Peters, anybody could park at this area?
Yes, yes. So, as you know now, right now, there's a gate.
There's a gate there.
That actually would be removed, relocated, so that they'll be able to have access. You can kind of see as we work further down in the area, this is really the gravel parking lot and how well it's maintained in regard to the site and why we're really actually looking to only pave about a third of it, just because of the way the condition is. These are laid out 10-foot wide parking spaces that work all the way down towards Mr. Robinson's buildings down through this portion of the site. So, in regard to the industrial zoning district, these are the requirements that we're looking at. In regard to the variances, once again, we have the front yard requirement of 50 feet. We're looking for a 13 and a half foot variance. In regard to the rear setback, we're asking for a 23-foot variance. That's really working from one corner of the building where we're two feet off, but in other cases we're four, and in other cases we're 16, but we'll go over that. And as I said, the, between the requests, item number one is the front yard setback, 50-foot front yard building setback. We'll have an area where the, the one corner of the building will be 36 and a half feet from the building setback line from the southern corner. We'll be looking for the 13 and a half. From the rear building area, there's a, and this is really more off of the covered porch and not the structure itself or the building structure, but from the southern covered seating area, we'll locate it two feet from the setbacks, so, which is why we're asking for a 23-foot variance. And then in regard to parking lot, shall have an impervious paved surface. All parking lots shall have an impervious paved surface. However, an equal may be used in place of impervious paving in lightly traveled areas with the permission of the Township Planning Commission. This is where we're asking for about two-thirds of the parking to be, use that existing gravel throughout the site. So, when we do look at the, the site plan in regard to the site, once again, the access point, we work our way over along through here, the proposed building, 3,000 square foot building. This will be the area where we'll have the paved parking area through this section, and then this will all be available parking through this section for the rest of the Always Be Smiling use as well as the residents. We look at the detail of the plan, the structure in itself. Will be a front canopy area right along and through here, a secondary side canopy through this section. Out the back will be a raised garden and rear seating patio area. This is where we'll have a lot of landscaping and horticultural type of work for, for the children and young adults. And then we'll also have kind of more of a wandering path location through here, where we'll get into a lot of different type of plant material that can be used and be able to have seating within the back. Within the front, once again, this is the access. So, you'll be coming up along and through here, we have the paved area through this section, eight to 10 paved parking spaces. We exceed the required number of ADA spaces, and we've added that potentially just because of the use. And what we've been able to do is to provide the, was it the five ADA parking spaces through here. We have a turnaround area through this section. We'll pave it so that we'll be able to get access to the actual trail in itself and then to the front door. It will be a little picnic area that will take place in this portion of the site. Yes.
Excuse me. So, the building is going to be, is, the reason you're here is for the variances. So, the building is going to be 36 and a half feet from the road setback, is that right?
Yeah, I'll have another slide that will kind of show that.
Because a lot of this, a lot of this, we're going to see in a site plan. This floats back to us, right?
Yes, we ultimately have to come back to planning commission for site plan.
Okay, so we'll see a lot of this detail again.
Yes, but we needed to get the variance before we're able to get into.
That I get. Your argument's already there, I'm just.
Yes. So, and then what we'll have is a dumpster, recycle dumpster located through here, and this would be the area where there'd be the existing gravel section. Right in through here would be really more of the public access for residents that are parking back along and through this area. This would be more of the access through the trail for the Always Be Smiling group through this, this section. As we see, this is more contours that take place, once again, anywhere between 16 to 18 feet in elevation change and the existing trees that remain all within this area of the site. You can see how nice or close in regard to access to, to the trail, the building. If you're familiar with Mr. Robinson's other buildings further down, there's one garage in upper areas. It's basically the same elevation off of the trail or distance off the trail. So, when we take a look at the variances, once again, the, the front building setback area off of this section, off of Valley Brook Road, we're, in this particular case, we're at 13-foot, 13 and a half foot variance at this point, and just to give you a reference, we're at 12. That's why we're asking for the 13 and a half foot variance through that portion of the requirement for the front building setback. From the rear building setback, once again, a 25-foot rear building setback. At this location, because of the covered porch area in through here, we're two feet off of the property line, so we need to have a 23-foot variance. We're four feet off of the property line at this point through here. And then, from a building standpoint, we have a nine-foot variance that will be required, but based under the, the requirements, we need to be asking for the 23-foot variance for the covered, covered seating area. Once again, you can see with the red lines through here, this is really between the front yard setback and the rear yard setback within the plan. And then, the last variance request, once again, is the asphalt parking area. This has been the area where we'd have all the asphalt installed. Very easy to be able to turn around along and through here or through here. We'll also add two bollards in through here, so traffic doesn't go into the, into the Montour Trail area, so there'll be that protective break. We'll also do that where the, more of the public access will take place. All this area will be the proposed gravel section within the plan.
Excuse me, Mike, is there already a fence there?
Oh, yeah, there is more.
It's like a wiry?
Yes, it's more of a wire fence.
It's already there, and that'll maintain there, other than those openings.
Correct, actually, we're going to, we're going to most likely add an improvement to the barrier in through there, make it a little bit more decorative, as well as considerable more landscaping associated with it. So, but as we look at the, this would be the proposed gravel area, you can kind of see the condition that we're at. Not steep at all, the grades in through this area are 1% to 2%. Parking area within the plan that would take place for the additional 30 parking spaces that's required for the activity center would take place in through this area, as well as the additional parking area that could be used for the residents to gain access to the trail. So, and just real quickly, this is just some of the image renderings that we have in regard to the proposed activity center. Once again, really working more off of the Montour Trail here. This is the covered roof structure through this section, the main 2,000 square foot area. Out and through here is really where the rear patio and seating area and landscaping would take place. This would be the front access into, into the building with the covered overhang structure through here. Bike parking associated within the plan through here, as well as the promenade and the covered structure. And once again, the view of the, of the front of the building through this section. And just some interior views that allow access for the participants and through here, and a learning kitchen that would take place within the, within the building. So, really, we've got, developed a series of hardships and justifications for the variance that we first reviewed with you and the zoning hearing board. One is the existing parcel is a long narrow property that limits the development area because of the front and rear yard set factor. This is not a self-created hardship within the plan. Item number two is for decades, the Thomas A. Robinson Family Limited Partnership, as I mentioned, thought they owned all three parcels within, within the area. As I said, there's parcel 9.6 that we're really requesting to variance. There's that back area of eight and a half that Mr. Robinson owns, but once again, the trail area in itself, which is 7.1 acres, that's the one that Mr. Robinson had thought was originally his, but through, once again, staff discussions, was pointed out that it was owned by Peters Township, which is why council, we went to council to discuss just the option that we're having in regard to the plan. Number three, the property owned by the trust is in, and the site requesting to variance is a flat gravel access to the Montour Trail. There's no other privately owned property that has this type of access to the trail without having steep access. Item number four is the site development area is located 16 feet higher than Valley Brook Road cartway, and the slope is, is fully wooded. This will provide both a topographic and a vegetative buffer along Valley Brook Road through this section. Item number five, several of the properties surrounding this proposed activity center is actually owned by the Thomas A. Robinson Family Limited Partnership property. To the west side of the property is the, of Valley Brook Road is Brush Creek and the undeveloped property for Hidden Brook Homeowners Association open space. This property cannot be developed any, any, any further just because of its existing slopes and open space designation. Item number six, the proposed variance will not alter the essential character of the existing neighborhood. The proposed activity center is a permitted use within the industrial zoning district as a private club. And lastly, the requested variance, the requested variance represents the minimum variance that will forward in regard to the plan. So, once again, we're seeking the planning commission's recommendation to the zoning hearing board in relationship to the, the three variances that we reviewed here tonight. Glad to answer any questions that you might have.
So, the Robinson Family Trust will be developing and constructing the building that we see here?
Yes, and they'll still own the property.
They'll own it, they'll maintain it?
Yes.
And they'll, they won't maintain it?
Well, will be a lease on the property?
Lease on the property, and Always Be Smiling will own the building.
Okay. Would the applicant be open to, so long as the unpaved area is open to residents or people on the trail, it can remain unpaved? But if for some reason Ed, they sell it to some for-profit entity and they shut it down for something else in the future, I'm not open to that being, under the circumstances, completely okay with that. But, but my recommendation to the ZHB would be if the use would change and that we go back to being fully paved. Thoughts? Want to think about it?
If the land changed hands and somebody else came in and did a different building, it has to come back to us, doesn't it?
I mean, yeah, so.
In a commercial piece.
A revised site plan would, but a change of use, say, you know, a different.
But at that time, couldn't, couldn't we instruct them at that time?
I don't know, if the variance is already granted.
If the variance is already granted to not.
But the ZHB can condition their variance.
They can.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah. You could add that condition to their variance request. Do you understand that?
Yeah, I got.
It's for Always Be Smiling.
Right, any future tenants.
And it's open to the public to use that.
So, even, even if a future tenant came in and those spaces still remained as public trailhead access?
Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
You also may want to, and I'm not sure if you've envisioned, but they may, may expand. I'm not sure if the footprint can expand, but if they do, you may want additional paved areas. You may have to use some of your paved area for additional structure.
Yeah, yeah. And we'd fine with it conditionally.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, good. Any other comments on this issue? Commissioners?
No comments, but as far as a recommendation, we're actually recommend, or approving the recommendation.
Which is providing a recommendation.
To the zoning hearing board for their further action.
For their consideration.
They have to make a decision.
Yep.
I would make that motion, that we prove it to be forward to zoning hearing board for their further action.
Okay, do you want to put a footnote on that?
You want to put a footnote with respect to the parking? Seth, do you want to restate that?
Yeah, so the variance as it relates to only requiring one-third of the impervious parking areas, or the parking areas be paved, be recommended for approval, subject to any future tenants that.
Conditioned.
Conditioned to, any future tenants that no longer allow for those spaces to be used as public trailhead access, they would need to be paved at that time.
Correct. Perfect. Is that it?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. High plaudits.
Thank you very much.
Good luck too.
Look forward to seeing in a few months the, for the land development plans.
Right, yeah. Next on the agenda is the Huntington Bank consolidation plan and site plan, 3944 and 3952 Washington Road. And I just want to make a note, the, the public out here today, that besides their representatives, lawyers, or whatnot, I'm going to limit a public comment to three minutes each. And also, understand the dis planning commission, we go through a set of requirements. We're not a legislative body, so we're not enacting any laws. So, we're going to review and determine what meets the requirement. So, it may not be, you know, exactly what everybody wants, but if the laws are what the laws are, we have to follow the laws here as a body. So, thank you. Go ahead Seth.
Thanks Jeff. McBride Dale Clarion, who's operating as an agent for Huntington Bank, has submitted a combination consolidation plan and site plan for a new Huntington Bank facility across the two properties along Washington Road currently addressed as 3944 and 3952 Washington Road. This would come with a combination of associated parking, landscaping, and infrastructure facilities. Starting with the consolidation plan, again, these are 3944 and 3952 Washington Road. The consolidation of the two parcels would result in a single 1.7 acre parcel of land. In accordance with the section 44503 of the Township zoning ordinance with regards to shared parking and cross-access, as part of the consolidation plan, they would be establishing an easement on the consolidation plan in the location of the existing slash proposed connection to the adjacent property to the north that is currently owned and operated by St. Clair Hospital, and that's the location of their St. Clair Hospital outpatient center. There's an existing connection that takes place to there. You can see it on the screen in front of you. Huntington Bank is proposing to maintain that existing connection. They would be formalizing the act, the cross-access easement on their side of a property as part of the consolidation plan. In regard to the overall site design and building design of the proposed bank, it's a 2,480 square foot bank with a three-lane drive-through, attached canopy off to the western side of the bank before that true is drive-through lanes. It's an 18-foot tall building with a combination of building materials that are cream, dark gray with green accents. The primary building entrance would be located along the northern and eastern facades of the building. You can see those with the associated accessible parking spaces. That's directly around the primary pedestrian entrance to the facility. There is a trash enclosure area that's covered with a. You can see those with the associated accessible parking spaces. That's directly around the primary pedestrian entrance to the facility. There is a trash enclosure area that's covered with like a screened louver that matches the rest of the building, so there's not like a separate trash enclosure, dumpster enclosure off through the corner of the site with a fence or a gate. It's a smaller facility that's nearer, closer to the building. The mechanical equipment proposed as part of the building is located on the flat roof on top of the building, and they're showing it to be screened from view. The site design includes, as I mentioned, an existing cross-access connection to the adjacent property to the north owned and operated by St. Clair Hospital. They are proposing to continue utilizing that existing connection, not making any changes to the curbing, grading, or anything right there at that entrance, so maintaining that existing connection and incorporating that into their site design. The circulation around the site is a little bit of a mixed bag. We've got two-way site circulation around the northeast section of the site to get you to those parking spaces on top of the screen there. When you go through the drive aisles for the drive-through and around the southern half of the building, it's more of a one-way circulation pattern. And there'll be appropriate do not enter signs at the southwest, southeast corner of the site to prevent people from going into oncoming traffic as they come around the building. Proposing a total of 20 parking spaces in accordance with the Township Zoning Ordinance, along with the two ADA accessible parking spaces that were shown on the screen there. Each of the proposed drive-through lanes incorporates the required number of queuing spaces as measured from the teller, which is four total spaces per drive-through length. And in terms of the landscaping around the site and lighting, they're proposing a number of new lighting fixtures and then a series of landscaping elements around the site, new buffers along Dam Road, some new plantings along the northern property line. The western half of the property, I shouldn't, I'm not even gonna say half, a good portion of the western side of the property, they're not proposing to touch and develop at this time, so that's going to maintain its wooded configuration and it's going to be vacant off to the western side of the property. As I mentioned earlier, the building includes a combination of cream, dark gray, and green accents.
Seth, can I stop you for a second?
Yes.
How would you even develop that back, the back of that property?
You might not Jeff. You know, we looked at this piece of property in the past.
Without the ability on the other, combine the other side, right?
Right, well, we looked at this in the past for another conceptual development and never even made it to planning commission. And the only configuration that I saw that even made a little bit of sense was it was a long parking lot along that section of the property, because there's not an easy way of accessing it back there, and it's so narrow that it lacks any real development potential in that portion of the property. It's really the piece up by Dam and Washington Road that the real value of this property is for development.
Yeah, we're doing two things at once here. It's a consolidation and a site plan. If there's just a site plan, it would stop here, but being a consolidation.
Correct, correct. And the site plan will stop here.
Yeah.
As I mentioned, green, cream, gray for the building, and these are both of the elevations as you see them throughout the site. We have Rob Sweet from McBride Dale here to provide a little presentation on behalf of his firm in Huntington Bank. Staff is making a recommendation of approval for the consolidation plan, which would be an approval by Township Council. So I've separated those in my recommendation, and that would be subject to the four conditions listed in my report. And then, as Jeff had mentioned, or Dave had mentioned, I am also providing a recommendation of approval for the site plan, which would stop here tonight at Planning Commission as the site plan approval aspect of this project. And my recommendation of approval is subject to the 14 conditions separately identified in my staff report. I'm happy answering questions. As I had said, we have a representative here as well that's going to run through a brief presentation.
Kind of trying to stick, right? Trying to figure out how this thing works.
Seth, is it even possible to approve a site plan without this consolidation?
It would not be possible to do the site plan without the consolidation plan tonight, no.
Hey, good evening. Name is Rob Sweet, I'm with McBride Dale Clarion, address 5721 Dragon Way, Suite 300, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45227. As Seth said, here tonight on behalf of Huntington. And before I get into it, let me just kind of introduce, because we're rolling deep tonight, we've got a lot of people. So first and foremost, on behalf of Huntington, I've got Fred Hawke, he's with Design and Construction. Our project architect, overall project managers, Andrew Hovis, he's with Vokon. Our civil engineer is Austin Han, he's with Allegro Engineering. Our traffic consultant is Josh Hado, he's with Worcester. Our legal counsel on this is Kevin McKeegan, he's with Meyer, Unkovic, and Scott. And I'm a urban planner, planning consultant with McBride Dale Clarion. So that's kind of our parameters of our team. Boop, just going all over the place. So we're here tonight requesting approval of a site plan, but a variance for a Huntington. Lot size is about 1.7 acres, depending on how you round up or round down. Properties, for those that are familiar with it, this is the old Roberts-Hare facility and Dr. Gabriel's former office or existing office, I don't know how, what that is right now, both their own GC, general commercial district. Little bit of history for y'all, and I apologize, my Kentucky gets in the way every now and then, but a little bit of history for y'all. So Huntington's been interested in this market for about three years now. And we started this venture back in 2019, looking at a bunch of different sites out here, and either four things happened, right? Too small, too expensive, somebody bought it from us, or it just didn't feel right. Wasn't the right traffic count, wasn't something else. And so at the beginning of 2021, Huntington put a contract on these two properties. And as you can, I don't want to blind anybody, but so you got St. Clair to the north here, don't worry, our Kentucky folks did this map, so it's a little juxtaposed. So the north is over here, St. Clair. The west is the river over there, cold fire pizza, Dam Road, and then you've got the commercial area to the east there. So we came out and met with staff June of 2021, so we've been essentially working on this thing for almost a year and a half now. And this is where I give you the shameless applause. So it's been great to work with Mr. Zuck and Mr. Coons. They've given us assistance when we needed it, they've provided advice whenever we were looking for it. So I just want to say thank you, and our team wants to say thank you as well. So we formally filed an application for site plan and subdivision on, in April. We've had a couple rounds of submittals, and we're here tonight. Not going to bore you with a bunch of details, Seth kind of stole my thunder already, appreciate that. But really, you know, as we were talking, buildings kind of in the middle here. You've got the 20 parking spaces or so on the north side and the west side, and also on the interior. Drive-through lanes to the west. Over here in the western portion of the site, you're probably wondering what the heck that is, that's our stormwater detention system. My understanding that all the water is captured on-site drains to that detention system. And then that actually goes down about 230 feet down Dam Road and hits an inlet, stormwater connection hole. Somebody much smarter, much better looking than me designed that. I can't really talk about it, but they're here for that. Access, as we said, both these properties have a driveway. We removed the driveway to the doctor's office, basically reconfiguring this driveway, and then we're proposing to reuse that existing cross-access point with St. Clair. Building itself, again, kind of just running through the same things, 18 feet tall, you know, traditional Huntington design. Trash enclosure, utility enclosures right down here. Typically, we're not using a dumpster with the bank. There's a lot of sensitive materials, a lot of numbers, a lot of account numbers, a lot of that kind of stuff. So they have a secure trash where they have somebody come and pick that up and grind it either on-site or they take it someplace. We're going to have a recycle bin and a trash can for non-recyclable materials. Also, all our utility connections, electric connections, gas connections, that's back in that utility closet. Couple other little items here to go on with this is we're proposing 23s, 115 or so shrubs. As Seth said, we're not doing anything to the west of the site. Lighting plan, pretty standard lighting plan, we're proposing four poles, 22-foot tall poles, flat, zero cut, or full cutoff lenses, LEDs. The biggest thing with this is we're less than .5 foot candles throughout the property line. So we're keeping that, we're keeping the light levels low. Subdivision plan pretty much says what it does on the box, right? So it's going to consolidate these two properties, moving from east to west. We are dedicating, as we were going through our titles and all that fun stuff with the project, we did see that we have some kind of an overlap here. The property is in the right way, we are proposing to dedicate that to the township. We can't use it, you guys can use it. To the center there, we've got that cross-access easement shown. And then on the west side right there, there's an old power line, and there's a power line back there, we're going to work with Penn Power to get an easement over top of that.
Is there going to be any signage on Washington?
We are going to, I'm going to get to that here in a minute. So, support for the project and coming into your signage question, we haven't looked at signage at this because it costs money to put together a sign package, right? And not knowing, there's some, a little bit of uncertainty with this, we don't want to spend the money to do it. But we've done everything that they've asked us to do, staff has asked us to do. We've had three or four revisions of plans, we're not asking for any variances, we're not asking for any kind of relief, we're doing everything that's been brought forward to us. And that goes to show you how good of a staff you have here tonight that's helped us through this.
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
How many employees are going to be at this retail branch?
Usually around...
Six, eight?
Five. Five.
Five. So it's not going to be like a regional center for just a retail branch?
Standard bank branch, that's no different to the PNCs.
Five employees. A drive-through and a walk-in.
Correct, correct. We'll have some teller spaces in there, some office spaces, a conference room, break rooms and bathrooms, but it's a, there's not a, we're not putting in a coffee shop, we're not co-leasing anything, standard bank branch.
Okay.
We did have a traffic study completed on this, along with a geotech report and some other items, and the biggest thing that we took away from it is negligible, I can talk, long trip, negligible impacts to the driveways, negligible impacts to the roadways that we adjoin. So just kind of think about that. And more importantly, we agree to all those 14 conditions, the other four conditions in the staff report, or seven conditions in the staff report for the development plan as well as the subdivision plan. With that being said, we are requesting, respectfully request approval of the site plan in the conditions as shown, and we respectfully request a recommendation to City Council for our subdivision plan. We've got a lot of us here, we're rolling deep, so if there's some questions, we'd be glad to assist.
I just ask, could we have your traffic engineer just come up real quick and summarize their study and what they determined?
Sure.
Relative to the site and relative to the driveway signal at St. Clair Hospital's connection?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, Josh Hado, David E. Worcester Associates, 2 East Crafton Avenue, Pittsburgh 15205. So I conducted the traffic impact study for this development. The scope of that study was prescribed by Township's Traffic Engineering Consultant, TPD. We studied the intersection of 19 and the St. Clair Hospital there, the stigmatized intersection, as well as the intersection of 19 and Dam Road, as well as the site accesses. What we found, what the study identified was that traffic associated with the new bank is going to have negligible, I would say, almost imperceptible impact to the traffic operations within that study area. Overall delay is going to increase by less than a second for vehicles traveling through that area. And the increase in stacking on the St. Clair Hospital driveway, kind of the main access to this developments, is going to increase by only about one vehicle during the peak periods of traffic for the bank. So all told, no mitig, no impacts were identified and no mitigations were recommended.
Have we, has our traffic engineer received their report?
Our traffic engineers here, and if you want to comment?
Yes, we reviewed and agreed with the recommend, with the report.
So we did a traffic study, or we did...
We asked that the development team prepare a traffic study. We gave them a scope, and they provided the traffic impact assessment. We then reviewed that traffic impact assessment based on the scope that we discussed with them, and as Amanda stated, we concurred ultimately with Josh's analysis.
Let me ask you this question, maybe you looked at this, maybe you did. Did you evaluate what's going through that access point into St. Clair Hospital now? I believe there, is there an existing position in that location?
No.
It's just vacant?
Vacant.
So there's nothing?
Correct.
So we don't have, was there anything ever there that worked with that easement area?
Nothing of any impact.
Okay, so we don't have like a, here's what we have now versus...
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
And I'll be available for any other questions.
Right. Any other comments? I'd be okay. Staff, do you have any other additional comments here?
I don't have any, not at this time.
I'd ask if there's representatives of St. Clair Hospital would like to get up, introduce yourself, please.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, my name is Jackie Selynder, I'm with the law firm K&amp;L Gates, and we represent St. Clair Hospital. Our address is 210 Sixth Avenue, Pittsburgh, 15222. As I mentioned, and as you've heard tonight, St. Clair Hospital owns the property at 3928 Washington Road, the property that adjoins the site at issue. And that property houses St. Clair's outpatient center, which serves thousands of patients and residents in Peters Township. St. Clair objects to Huntington Bank's site plan and objects and requests that the planning commission vote no in terms of approving this site plan. First, it's our position that it's premature for the planning commission to issue a decision on the site plan in light of the hospital's pending appeal in the Washington County Court of Common Pleas. That pending appeal involves the issue of whether or not the hospital is in violation of the ordinance addressing cross-access driveways by refusing to consent to the bank using that cross-access driveway for the proposed development. And that appeal also includes the issue of whether what's being imposed here and requested by the bank is actually a common driveway as opposed to a cross-access driveway or in addition to. And I want to make that point, and I'm glad the site plan is up, because that is exactly what Huntington is proposing to do in its site plan, to use the portion of St. Clair's driveway between Route 19 and that access point at the top, from what I just heard and was just described as the main access to the development. That's not just a cross-access driveway that's being requested, they're asking to use the hospital's driveway to come in and out as a main access point. And that was addressed as well in the traffic assessment letter that we received a copy of dated September 12, 2012. And you can see that there as the in and out arrows show that they are proposing for that to be a main entrance. And their traffic study anticipates significant increased volumes of traffic to be coming in and out of that access point. So our first objection to this is that it's premature, and the appeal that's pending in the Washington County Court of Common Pleas needs to be decided before a vote is had, or at a minimum, the recommendation or decision should be conditioned upon resolution of that appeal.
Let me ask you a question, Seth, for a second. So say if you're, you do not win at the common pleas level, and then you appeal it again to the Commonwealth Court, do you expect this body to remain until you're done with that, all the proceedings, until you potentially go up to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court?
That's possible.
So you're asking for this, for us to wait that long?
Well...
And hold up the applicant for that court? I mean, I'm posing the question.
Yeah, yeah, and that's possible. What's different potentially, I think, about this situation than maybe what happens in others, is if this site plan moves forward and, you know, they start to use and construct this and are using the hospital's driveway to come in and out of their property, and the court says, agrees with us and says, you don't have to continue to provide that cross-access driveway, you're not in violation of the ordinance by saying, we don't consent to providing it.
Well, what happens at that point if the court just says, okay, they shut it off, they're no longer allowed to use it, and they only use the one entrance?
Yeah, I guess, I guess that's, that's a possible scenario.
Right, John?
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, that would be the risk of the applicant, right? And the problem, and I understand council's argument, but our ordinance doesn't look to that situation. We get an application, we have to process it.
Gotcha.
And so, you know, in recognition of that, we can't hold it for two years and wait either.
Well, yeah, and I recognize that, but so, under those circumstances, and say if St. Clair Hospital does win, and they start a construction, and they start operations, and appellate court says, no, you were wrong, then the remedy would be simply to shut down that access point?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I don't see any other way around that, if that's, because we have to follow what the court orders.
Sure.
And I think the applicant should be well aware of that situation.
Okay. Okay. Sorry, Debra.
That's okay, thank you, I appreciate all the questions, please. Second is that we're not aware of any feasibility determination ever having been done relative to this proposed cross-access driveway. When we were before the zoning hearing board back in March of 2022, when this issue came up, township took the position that any feasibility determination would be assessed at the planning commission of whether continued cross-access driveway use is feasible as between those two properties, and that you have to look at what the intended use for the proposed development is, not just about topography, is it already there? You have to look at what the intended use is, and to our knowledge, that feasibility determination has not been done, and if it has?
Who are you looking for that feasibility determination to be done by? The township or the applicant? Or St. Clair saying it's not feasible?
Well, with respect to establishing, excuse me, feasibility, township or Huntington, we don't believe that feasibility determination has been made, if it has been, if that assessment has been done, by them, it was done without consultation of the hospital.
Is the feasibility study something different than the traffic impact analysis?
We believe it is, and we believe it should be.
Okay.
Yeah.
Why?
Sure. It's not to determine whether cross-access driveway is feasible when you're looking at intended use, you don't just look, in our view, at impact on traffic that's going to come in and out, or whether there's going to be a conflict between traffic. That traffic study did not look at whether or not there are going to be disabled patients walking in and out of the hospital area. It did not look at whether there, what impacts there might be in terms of outside of just cars that may be coming in and out. So in our view, there does need to be more than a traffic, a traffic study done to assess feasibility when you're talking about a driveway between a medical facility and what's otherwise a commercial establishment. So we do think that more than a traffic study is necessary to do a true feasibility analysis.
Aren't sidewalks from the parking lot of St. Clair into the building in existence?
Yeah, they're all.
And would people walk or take a wheelchair on a road, or would they go on a sidewalk where they're safe and protected from vehicle traffic?
Yeah, there are absolutely sidewalks.
But what you were suggesting is that people in wheelchairs would be traveling on the road where vehicles use instead of going onto a sidewalk.
Right. Yeah, and that has, that has happened, it's certainly the hospital's preference that people use the sidewalks and the crosswalks that are, that are already provided there, but it doesn't, it doesn't happen all the time. And, you know, one of my, one of my points before about the traffic study not being enough is that have people, as part of the study, did they go out and observe where pedestrians actually walk? I take your point, I'd much rather patients be on the sidewalk as well than walking on the crosswalks, but it doesn't happen all the time, particularly if the drop-off and pickup lanes get backed up in any way. So, so we don't think, to go back to original question, that the traffic study is sufficient in and of itself.
Let me ask you this, has your team produced on your behalf a feasibility analysis so that we could evaluate it?
Yeah, I would say that I, it's, I'm going, I will address why we do not think a cross-access driveway is feasible, I would say that I don't think it's the hospital's burden to show, I think it's the proposed bank and township's burden to establish feasibility, and I'll appear to offer some points as to why we do not believe that use of cross-access driveway is feasible between these two establishments.
Jackie, you started your narrative with the fact that the word "main entrance" was used, and is that more of the substance of your argument that another, another, the applicant in this case, Huntington Bank, is using your client's property as their main access?
Yeah, I think the fact that, it doesn't totally have to do with the fact that that's their main entrance point, I think it, it makes the point that what they're really asking and wanting, wanting here is not just a cross-access driveway, which, you know, per the, per the ordinance is designed to allow traffic to go between two establishments, people don't have to go back on the main road to go from one establishment to the next. But that's not really why the cross, use of the cross-access driveway is being sought. The cross-access driveway is simply an entrance point, and what they're really looking for here is use of the hospital's driveway. So it makes, it's not just about it being the main entrance point in and out, I think it further establishes the point that what they're, they're really after here is access to the light, because they don't have a direct access point to Route 19. And I would, I would point out, in the traffic study analysis, based on our analysis, it shows almost no traffic that would be going in between the proposed bank site to the hospital site, which is what a, what a cross-access driveway point is really for, to allow facilitation of traffic between two sites. What the traffic study impact shows is that actually, it's just about increased traffic volumes that are going to be coming down the driveway into that main access point and the other intersections that were studied.
Is there some type of barrier right there, like right end, left, or is there some?
Landscape media.
Landscape media.
Yeah, and I'm glad you pointed that out, because with respect to feasibility as well, what they're proposing is to come right, you know, off of 19 into the hospital's driveway and to turn left into where the cross-access, into where this cross-access driveway point would be, but what you can see is that there's yellow lines and yellow shading here. So as it currently exists, traffic's going to need to drive over the yellow lines, which are there for a reason, to direct traffic to come in and out of here. So the cross-access driveway can't be used in its current condition without requiring the hospital to make improvements and changes to its driveway and its traffic flow there.
But if Huntington would cover that yellow line to make it obvious that that's where the access point is into their property, they wouldn't be crossing, a vehicle wouldn't be crossing a yellow line.
Well, but that's, that's.
Your point is, I mean, just because there's a yellow line there, they can't drive over it?
Well.
Or eliminate the yellow line so they can drive over it?
You're right, but by eliminating the yellow line, what that does is force St. Clair to have to make adjustments to its property and its traffic patterns that it has, it has those yellow lines there for a reason, is my point, which is to keep traffic going straight immediately to the left of that, you know, that median area, and by removing the yellow lines, we then have to allow traffic to turn left there into the bank parking lot, it's encroaching on the hospital's traffic flow and its ability to use its driveway to service its patients.
John, is, there's precedents, I'm sure, somewhere in the township or in other jurisdictions, but what's our ordinance?
Well, and to be fair, let me back up, I think I know where you're going, Huntington is not necessarily proposing this, we're requiring it. So our ordinance requires this cross-access to be used, so they didn't come to us and say, we want to use this, our ordinance makes them use it, and so that's why their plans depict what they're showing. St. Clair's position has always been, they don't want that traffic to come through, and that's why we're in litigation, but this is a township ordinance section that mandates this cross-access, if it's feasible. So feasibility is really an issue for you as part of the site plan consideration, is this feasible, you know, we always use, and not to pick on McDonald's, if this was a McDonald's and the traffic count would back up there, the engineers may say that access is not feasible because it could create a problem. So we required them to provide a feasibility traffic analysis to make sure that cross-access could be safely used, and then we paid our own township traffic engineers to review that to make sure that it was accurate, and they both agree. Now, we did have them go back and, because St. Clair has brought up pedestrian issues, and we did have them go back, and they're probably better versed than I am, to address that they, their finding, there was going to be no pedestrian problems with the traffic, any impact. Again, I can't speak to that, but I know the reports do.
So they looked at vehicle as well as pedestrian traffic?
Right, and I think, again, they're more schooled to come up and speak to you about that so you can make that determination as to whether this use is going to be impactful. You've already heard both engineers, in this point, saying that it is not, and I think, Chairman, you asked a question whether St. Clair produced, an engineer that finds it to the contrary, I know council does, but I don't know that you have any other engineering reports to look to, to negate the feasibility that's been proposed by both, or at least been confirmed by the township. But again, just so we're clear, and I don't know Huntington from anybody, it is not their choice to do this, it's, it's the township just to control traffic on 19.
Let me ask you this question, and I apologize, Debra. So when I thought about the importance of these sort of cross-access easements, what I truly felt the government belief was to create them, was to relieve traffic on Route 19. In this case, the applicant has Dam Road there, which is a point to get down to 19 on virtue of other sides. I mean, probably the biggest reason the township wants to have these cross-access points was up in the Giant Eagle former Kmart shopping center, where you cannot get both, and you have to come back down because of the, the time it didn't have. I mean, this is a little bit different situation with Dam Road and the ability to, to access those lights, you know, not saying the purpose of it, and it's not our township ordinance, but if I'm looking at the ordinance, which I'm not a commissioner, I would evaluate the circumstances for these, as far as the ordinance been enacted, because I'm not sure the purpose is not already accomplished by this auxiliary road, Dam Road being adjacent to Route 19. So, just a thought or comment, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, thank you, I appreciate the questions. So three reasons, we believe that the cross-access driveway is not feasible as between these two sites. First is that to be feasible, an intended use can't be one that encroaches on a neighboring landowner's property rights, and here, that does just that for the reasons I pointed out. What this does is impose a common driveway, which is something entirely different under the ordinance, and the hospital is not consented to that and is opposed to it, and so, for that reason, we believe the cross-access driveway use is not feasible here. Second, it's not feasible because it would increase traffic and importantly have patient safety issues, including the ones that I've pointed out. At the zoning hearing board meeting before, back in May, excuse me, March of 2022, one of the physicians at the outpatient center offered comments to that effect, including that of other doctors that have concerns about their patient's safety with increased traffic counts coming through that. And the traffic study itself shows that its assessment of the intersections and the increased traffic is an additional 388 vehicles entering and exiting as a result of the newly generated bank traffic each weekday, 81 for PM peak hours and 83 for Saturday peak hours, and it's.
388?
At the studied intersections that they looked at.
Per day?
Per weekday, so.
Go ahead.
190, I think it's 194 in, 194 out. With respect to this particular entrance and exit point, and this is just for the Saturday and PM peak hours, there'd be 21 new site-generated trips estimated by the bank that would be coming in and out of the hospital's driveway and that cross-access driveway point. Now, the traffic study itself did only address the increased or impacts on traffic, and there was a comment that was issued in response to a comment or a question from the township traffic engineer about any impacts on pedestrian circulation, and they did make a comment that they, given where the driveway is and where the parking lots is, and to your point about, you know, people should be using the crosswalks and the sidewalks, that they don't expect there to be any pedestrian impact. But my, my point before, and just to be clear, is, you know, those were based on anticipated traffic volumes, but to our knowledge, nobody's gone out and studied where the patients actually walk, what percentage of them are needing assistance or not, and nobody who did that traffic study came and talked to the hospital and asked what their concerns are about where the traffic actually goes and where the pedestrians are actually flowing, and in our view, you know, that concern hasn't been accounted for. And the third reason that we believe the cross-access driveway use is not feasible is because the presence of it and allowing traffic to be routed down the hospital's driveway and into that cross-access driveway would inhibit the hospital's, hospital's ability to use that property and the outpatient property as it wants to in the future. Those increased traffic volumes that will come in and out will have to be accounted for by the hospital in any future expansion plans that it decides to do, not just to the footprint of the current building, but building out the interior space that they have. And those are not theoretical, down-the-road possibility concerns, those are actual plans that the hospital has. They want to build out a few thousand feet of unfinished space in their building to provide additional medical care for patients on the first floor of that building, that's going to increase the number of patients that are going to be coming in and out of this area needing to be parking, and so volume of cars as well. The only reason that work hasn't begun is because the building permit was denied on account of this issue regarding the continued use of the cross-access driveway and, and the issue we've been talking about here tonight. And so we would submit that continued use of that cross-access driveway is not feasible at a minimum because it imposes on the hospital's property rights and its ability to use its property rights to expand patient care to residents in this community, and it's on this last point, I'd like to invite Rich Taylor from the hospital to come up and just offer a couple comments. Thank you for your time and questions, and I'm happy to answer more questions if you have them.
My name's Rich Taylor, I'm Vice President of Facilities, Facilities Management and Operations for St. Clair Health. Address is 1212 Lake Mont Drive in Mount Lebanon, Pennsylvania, 15243. As Jackie mentioned, we do have specific plans, both in motion and conceptual, for our campus at Peters Township. Jackie spoke to the one that has currently been designed and ready for construction. We have a 5,000 square foot multi-specialty physician offices, office located on the first floor of our building. Expansion will provide capacity for additional four primary care providers as well as specialty physicians that would circulate in and out of the facility. This needed expansion provides, is intended to provide the community with the need for additional primary care, but as well, these additional services would be providing additional volume to the building in Peters Township. As Jackie mentioned, this, this project has been submitted for permit, is ready for construction, has been on hold since January of this year. In addition, other more longer-term plans for the campus, at conception of the building in the early 2010 era, the building was, the existing building is designed for vertical expansion. The structural components of the building are, have been designed to accommodate a third floor upon the roof for additional services that could be both approximately about 15,000 to 20,000 additional square feet of space, which would be additional physician space, additional diagnostic areas, and potentially additional treatment, treatment areas for our, for our patients. Lastly, longer term, at acquisition of the property, we do have conceptual plans for even additional buildings on, on the property, some of this would potentially require additional property acquisitions, but there, longer term, we do anticipate, or hope, would hope to expand our footprint on the campus. So in light of that, I just want to say St. Clair Health does have concerns about the proposed neighboring development, as Jackie has pointed out here through its use of the proposed shared driveway, which will potentially, and we will need to account for, and it could potentially limit our ability to move forward with any of our longer-term plans for the campus.
You said your development's on hold due to the pending appeal, is that why it's on hold?
The building permit, it's a 5,000 square foot fit out, we designed the building, we have 5,000 square feet of shared, I'm sorry, shared space in that building, which we've held empty for approximately 10 years now, ready to move forward with that. We submitted for billing permit, we received notice that we met all the technical qualifications for the billing permit to be approved, but it was denied due to the cross-access.
What do they deny?
They were denied because the violation of the site plan, that they wouldn't record an easement and acknowledge the cross-access. They appealed that as well to the zoning board, and the zoning board affirmed the township's denial of the permit. denial of the permit.
That is up on appeal with the court of common.
Yeah, that's one of the issues on appeal.
So your expansion is going vertical, it's not increasing the footprint of the existing building?
Well, the expansion we're talking about here, there's space within the building, that's the first one that is ready to go. Longer-term, correct, we have the ability to go vertical with our building, and we also have the, we hope to have the ability to go additional buildings on the campus. Any other questions I can answer?
Mr. Chair, I did want to comment, you made a comment about the traffic flow, and I don't know this as well as the staff.
Yeah, Jeff, unless I'm mistaken, if you are exiting off the proposed development onto Dam Road.
Yes.
You cannot get north onto 19 unless you go all the way down to McDowell to that light.
Down to that light, then you can make a left.
Right, you're limited to a right.
So you go up to Dam Road, you gotta make a right.
To go south.
So now, if I'm coming south on 19, can I get off on, yeah, I can get off on 19 and go to Dam.
You go to McDowell.
And then turn right, go in front of Anthony's Coal-Fired Pizza, come up Dam Road.
No, you can, yeah, I mean, you can get directly onto Dam Road if you're coming south on 19.
Yeah.
But to go north on 19 from Dam Road, you have to go down to McDowell and come back up. This cross-access connection is serving as an access management in the sense that it allows for traffic from the bank facility to be able to get onto Route 19 more easily than having to go all the way down.
You can get there.
Through the light.
South on 19, or coming across traffic from Giant Eagle or the Dawson's Crossroad Shopping Center, going through the light directly into the driveway.
I've always been a fan of interconnections throughout the township. I've always voiced my, you know, approval of that. But in this case, the applicant, their address is on Dam Road and St. Clair is on 19.
The Washington Road.
Well, it's, I mean, our interconnections now have all been on one road. I mean, kind of alluded to what you said.
Yeah.
Is to keep traffic off of one thing, so I'm just, I'm having, I'm having an internal fight with myself.
Well, and I guess at the same time, though.
It may not be the same thing.
You know, if you're in the St. Clair Hospital parking lot and you want to get down to McDowell, you can go through the bank, go down Dam and go right on McDowell. You don't have to go back to 19. If that light's.
Yeah.
If the light's red, you can skip.
Also, access to emergency exit in the case there's an accident in front of St. Clair.
If the light, for some reason, malfunctioning.
It serves two purposes for both facilities.
There's an accident.
It's a separate means out.
Gives another way in and out to St. Clair.
And that's why we require, not just for the benefit of Huntington Bank, but for the benefit of all surrounding properties.
And what counsel pointed out, she correctly was going after, what you have to look at is feasibility, but it's a mandatory requirement if it's feasible. You know, that's what our fight about is important to some extent, and that's what the ordinance reads, that you shall do it.
Yeah, you have to do it so long as it's feasible.
Right, and so.
The question is, what's the definition of feasible?
Right, so we've looked at this in terms of, obviously, topographically, that's feasibility. Counsel's brought up what she believes feasibility is in terms of all, why, or I'm sorry, why, Jackie, why it isn't feasible. But we looked at it from a traffic standpoint, because that's what the ordinance speaks to, and does it create any sort of traffic problems? That's what the two engineers spoke to, in terms of what we believe feasibility is.
And Jackie, why do you not feel it's necessary to bring in an expert beside yourself as a counselor?
Yeah, well.
I think I would like, I would love to hear some kind of traffic consultant or analyze the safety issues rather than just a lawyer telling.
Yeah, I understand your position. I would say it's not just the lawyers that are telling you. We did have a lot of testimony in front of the zoning hearing board, including from other individuals other than counsel who are expressing those safety concerns. And, you know, I think our point is it's not just about what a traffic engineer can tell you about what volumes of cars come in and out. You need an assessment that's broader than what an engineer can tell you about where traffic's going to go. And I think that's especially so when you're talking about a medical facility. We're not talking about two commercial establishments like a bank and a grocery store where people are just coming in to buy things or, you know, make a simple transaction and get out. I think that this situation with medical facility requires, and I would, I would say that I believe it's a burden of township and the applicant to show feasibility beyond what a traffic study can show you about why it's feasible. I just want to, oh, please.
You're saying that the people going into the medical facility are different than the people going into the bank?
Yes, I am. I think when you, when you go in for, let me.
I do both.
Oh, no, I believe you can do both.
And I would be a customer of Huntington Bank. And if after I got my x-ray at St. Clair outpatient clinic, I decide, oh, I have to go make a deposit to my account, I might just drive straight across and go through the drive-thru or go into the office.
Yeah, and I do believe that there would be situations, just like the one where you're going in for a routine x-ray and you say, hey, you know what, I need to get caught up on my banking, here I go. But I would submit that the type of care St. Clair provides there, see patients where you're going in for more severe things, you're going in because you've got life-threatening illnesses and you're not thinking about popping over to the bank, you're concerned about your own safety.
Is this an ER center? Just like an emergency place where ambulances go?
It's not, although ambulances have come in and out for certain emergencies, but it's not like an urgent care where you expect ambulances to be coming in all the time.
But I know for a fact, you have a lot of physician offices in that.
That's right, and it's not just internal medicine where you're going for your annual physical. There's an OB-GYN there where people get bad news, right, about things that are going to happen, and we've got elderly patients and disabled individuals, there's lots of different physicians there, so I would.
Is there a cancer center in there where people are getting chemotherapy?
No, no.
In a weakened condition?
Well, there are patients that come in in a weakened condition, but there's not a cancer care there. But that's exactly the type of, you're asking the exact type of questions that we believe need to be taken into account, any properly done feasibility analysis.
But the sidewalk allows for them to go into and out of the hospital facility without going in the middle of the road. I'm having, I'm struggling with understanding why you're so fearful of your customers and patients having, being in jeopardy.
Yeah.
With this access to make a left into the bank's parking lot.
Yeah, and what I can tell you, just in addition to the other comments I made about, certainly that's our hope, that that's what the pedestrians are doing, but safety is the top priority for the hospital, and we don't, we know it's not the case, unfortunately, that all the patients are using the exact right points to get in and out of that building, and we don't want to take any chances that those patients are, you know, are put in jeopardy because of traffic. They're not expecting they're to be through bank traffic when they're coming to this facility, which was designed as a closed campus facility. And I just wanted to mention, I know that Huntington has been looking for a property for a few years, that was a comment made, but St. Clair has been here since 2010, and they developed this facility with the understanding it would be a closed medical campus where patients don't have to think twice about, you know, through traffic coming into, to an establishment. So I totally understand your point.
Does St. Clair have any other facilities other than those at the hospital?
They have other, other facilities other than the main hospital, but they're not closed campuses like this one currently is.
I believe there's one by the mall that has quite a few doctor's offices and urgent care that is in a crazy building area.
Yes, that's, you are exactly correct.
That's why they're dropped.
That is, yes.
This, this looks like even having a little bit of bank traffic going through there, it's nothing like the crazy.
You're absolutely right, and the, what you're describing at that facility, that sort of crazy traffic situation, is exactly the reason that the hospital built this facility that was closed campus, where we weren't going to have to be worrying about that sort of a situation with lots of different, you know, businesses that are, you know, having traffic come in and out, just like the one that you're talking about, you know, on Oxford. Right? So, you know, just the last point I would make, and you touched on it, is, this isn't, I've been talking a lot about feasibility of the cross-access driveway, and there is a dispute about whether it's mandatory or not, that's up with the court, so that's where my comments have been focused for the last little while. But this issue about the common driveway and what the site plan is seeking is for there to be an established common driveway on the hospital's driveway is another reason that we believe that the site plan should not be approved and that it encroaches on the hospital's property right and goes beyond what the ordinance allows.
And just so the board knows, I mean, this was a point of contention before the zoning hearing board about this closed campus, and the reason the township was successful before the zoning hearing board was, there was a requirement that they show this cross-access. And initially, it wasn't on the plans, they went back and their engineers placed it on the plan, did the curb cut, and showed, constructed the cross-access. And then eventually, it was connected with Dr. Gabriel, I believe, connected it, and this is kind of where we are. So, there was, there was an argument as to whether they understood what they, I don't want to go back through that record, but nonetheless, the township's position was they were well aware that it was required at the time, and that's one of the reasons the township was successful before the ZHB, because they agreed, because the ordinance where it reads required it, and the plan showed it, and then they backed off from it, and that's what's up on appeal.
Yeah, that's a hotly contested issue between the parties, but.
I apologize, I didn't do a site visit, I'm not able to drive for a couple weeks, but the, so you're saying there is a curb cut there and you can't access.
It's a full connection.
Right now, you could go drive right through it right now.
Yeah, Dave, if you look.
I mean, I can, I kind of see it there, but I guess what I'm.
Right, you can see the white stop bar.
I guess what I'm saying is there is actual curb cut.
Yeah, there was a point where Dr. Gabriel was there, I believe, and he's here, that his patients or anybody could go out that way, that's why he made a connection. And it was being used, it's not blocked today, you could use it right now if you wanted to cut through there.
And there's a curb cut, I mean, it's actual.
Yeah, there was a curb cut from the initial, before they got their occupancy permit, they, as built, St. Clair built with a curb cut showing the cross-access.
Okay, that's what I need to, gotcha, thanks, John.
Yeah, that's, one other point is with respect to the consolidation plan, the current cross-access, well, the current driveway cut that existed there was only ever for Dr. Gabriel's property, and for his, it's an issue between the parties, but for his personal use. What's being proposed here is a consolidation of two lots, one of which has no access to the cross-access driveway at this point. So, certainly goes beyond what St. Clair, even if, you know, you were to accept the other position on that, certainly goes beyond what St. Clair ever understood could be possible at the time, you know, this curb cut was initially put there.
Those driveways are connected now, aren't they?
What's that?
Those two parcels that are going to be, supposedly being.
Consolidated.
Consolidated or connected now, aren't they?
I don't believe that's.
The doctor's office to the haircut salon?
Not by car, you cannot.
Okay, gotcha.
And, and the point about being able to use Dam Road, just to be clear, it's 500, it's 500 feet to drive from this driveway on Dam down to the light down by Anthony's Coal-Fired Pizza. We're not talking about, you know, a mile or whatever, that's 500 feet. Anyone who's driven down there, it's a short drive, we're talking about a five-second drive down the road. This is about convenience, not about actual need to access, but in any event, in our view, it's not appropriate.
And I want to make a point for clarification. St. Clair has the right to be here and has the right to object and speak about feasibility because the ordinance anticipates that. Every time these uses change, if St. Clair changes and St. Clair wants to be something bigger, Huntington may come in and say, wait a minute, it's no longer feasible because of all the increased traffic the other way. So the ordinance is, while it's mandatory, the feasibility analysis has been done and will be done every time somebody comes in there, because one of their concerns is what if there was a greater use, like a McDonald's or Starbucks like we saw coming in, that would be subject to our traffic engineer's report. So every time it changes hands or changes uses, the ordinance recognizes a new analysis has to be performed. So, they can come in like they're doing, and in this particular instance, that's why we required Huntington to have their traffic engineers study it, have our traffic engineers speak to it, because they're the ones that are qualified to address it. I see Mr. McKeegan creeping up back there.
Good evening, my name is Kevin McKeegan, I'm with the law firm of Meyer, on the Michael Scott, and we're local land use counsel to Huntington Bank. I'm going to be very brief in my remarks, but I want to make sure, number one, we get back to the issue at hand, which is a development plan and a subdivision. And I think it's important, although Mr. Smith has alluded to this, and I think the chair alluded to this earlier, that you understand what the law of Pennsylvania is, and it's very clear. And I'm going to read from a Commonwealth Court decision. In her versus Lancaster County Planning Commission, we summarize the law generally governing the review of a subdivision application as follows. Where a plan complies with all objective provisions of the applicable ordinance, as well as other applicable regulations, the plan must be approved. Where a plan is not approved as filed, the decision denying approval must specify the defects found in the plan in sight to the specific provisions of the ordinance which you relied upon. So what you have here are plans that staff agrees fully complies with the terms of Peters Township's ordinances. There's no question about that to the staff. There's been nothing other than statements from counsel to suggest that these plans do not comply with the ordinances, therefore, you're not a legislative body, you're absolutely correct about that. Your process judicial, you have to hold up the plan against the ordinance, and if it meets the ordinance's requirements, it must be approved. Let me turn to a couple of comments that counsel made. First of all, the MPC is very clear that the municipality must act on plans within certain time periods after they can submit it, unless the applicant, unless the applicant agrees to a delay. This applicant is not agreeing to a delay in any consideration of these plans, so we will insist that the municipality planning code of time provisions for consideration and action on the plan, on the plan, be respected here. Second of all, regarding the question of feasibility, lawyers get paid to parse words, I think we all know that, but feasibility in this case, clearly, if you look at the ordinance's turns on traffic studies, the traffic study here was submitted, it was reviewed by the township's traffic engineer, so you have two engineers looking at this. Those engineers agreed with the conclusions of those reports. There's been no evidence submitted, no statements from other traffic engineers, no testimony, we lawyers like to speak, but that's not testimony, no testimony regarding any adverse traffic impacts from this development. And specifically, since we're talking about pedestrians, I do want the board, I think counsel did allude to this, board to note that pedestrian impacts were considered by the traffic consultants. It was reviewed by Mr. Haydo, also reviewed by the township's consultant, and the conclusion was that no impacts to pedestrian circulation are anticipated, as traffic designated to and from the bank is not projected to approach upon any areas where pedestrian activity occurs. Bank traffic will utilize only the portion of the St. Clair Hospital driveway between the access, between the bank access and Route 19. Because all of the hospital parking areas are located to the west of the bank access, no conflict between hospital pedestrians and bank vehicles are anticipated. Now, obviously, we can't account for one individual who decides that they're going to walk where they shouldn't walk. But that's not how objective engineering analysis is done. It looks at objective criteria, what's existing on the property, and clearly here, the hospital's design and the design of these driveways should have no impact on pedestrian circulation. So the last thing I'd like to make is a sort of an overall comment. I understand where the hospital's coming from. Frankly, if I were representing the hospital, I'd be making the same arguments, but this is not the body that needs to adjudicate those arguments. That's the court of common pleas. If the hospital has a problem here, it's not with the site plan, it's with the township's ordinances. And that gets worked out, not in front of this body, you either go back to the town council and say, change the ordinance, or you get a judge to say that the township is wrong. You don't do it at this level. This level is limited to reviewing the plan, does it meet the ordinances? If it does, it has to be approved. So, again, thank you for your consideration, happy to answer questions, but I think this is actually fairly straightforward in this case.
Thanks.
And our charge here is purely as a recommendation, is it not?
The site plan is in approval.
Site plan is in approval.
Consolidation.
Consolidation is a recommendation.
It's a recommendation.
Okay.
There might be more audience comments.
Yeah, any other audience comments? Please come on up and introduce yourself.
My name is Debbie Schusler, I live at 128 Johnston Road, the glory on 507. Let me preface what I'm going to say by the fact, I have a disabled nephew, and so we have, I have to represent the payday accounts and the trust accounts with Huntington. Well, now, in order to service those accounts, I have to go to either Bethel or Washington, VA, which is very inconvenient. I would love to see a bank here, Huntington Bank. However, I have also used that medical facility, gone in and out, and I don't know anything about the traffic studies that have been done, but it is not easy to get in and out of there. I have come out of that, and the lights coming out, people coming down 19, who want to make the light, and will pack up and then jam up everything, and the lights change, and nobody can move, you can't get in or out of that facility. And it's happened to me, it's happened to my husband, I've been there for cardiac problems, so it's not, I go in because I'm seeing a PCP, it is for something that's serious. And I cannot imagine having that driveway used by a bank, although I would be one of the ones that would use it, probably not at the same time I'm going for my cardiac care. But I just want to say that, just as an individual. But I just want to say that, just as an individual in the community, as much as I want the bank, I would not like to see a shared driveway. You know, to have it on Dam Road would be great, you know, when you come out of Chipotle, you can't go north on 19, you have to come around, so to say, oh, we can't go north from that, is not, to me, you know, go around, go another way.
And if you come out of Chipotle and try to get on West McMurray Road to make a left, you can't get across, so you're better off going Alpheim Express and come around.
So we, there's a lot of problems close that is.
It almost sounds like to me that the problem would be the problem with the light itself.
The whole intersection.
So if you're saying there's a problem with the light itself, then we're talking about they can't expand, because that light's not working. So, it's almost as if there's, there's a fundamental flaw with PennDOT and the HOP for that light, then there is an issue with the side entrance for a bank that might have a few people going and out of it. So, I'm not sure.
I don't think they would put a branch there if they only thought a few people were going to go in and out of it. I mean, what do you consider a few? If they're not going to have more than 50, 100 people.
I don't think bank traffic's nearly as much as it used to be.
Yeah, I don't know.
Traffic is probably one of the biggest, most difficult issues facing us in the whole township.
Right, right, I agree.
And the more building, and that whole corridor on Route 19 with Donaldson's Crossroads, East and West McMurray Road, that gets stacked up so heavily.
Yes, it does.
I live on East McMurray Road, or off of it, I can't get through Donaldson's Crossroads sometimes. I go all the way down the valley.
Yeah, I do the same thing, but, so that's all I wanted to say is.
Thank you.
I think, yeah.
Very helpful, thank you very much.
Sure.
Anybody else? Anybody in the middle row, over here? Please come up, introduce yourself.
I'm David Studen, I live at 109 Sunridge in McMurray. I spoke back at the hearing back in March. St. Clair Health is their own worst enemy when they talk about safety. I'm not sure if I can use this, but they have parking all along the left side past the turn-in, and their patients have to walk across two lanes of traffic to get to the sidewalk.
They're on the traffic.
And that's, that's their issue already, and they're going to expand and create more traffic. As you said, bank traffic is 10 per hour, I counted Chase, I counted Bank of America and Dollar Bank. Banks don't have a lot of traffic, there's people still bank, but they don't drive in to use the towers or the drive-throughs very much. So I'm in support of approving the Huntington Bank.
Anybody else on this side? Any other audience comments? Staff comments?
Not at this time, no, Jeff.
Why don't we address it one at a time? While we address the consolidation plan?
That's mine.
That is a recommendation to counsel. Can I? I'll make a motion that we approve Planning Commission, your staff's recommendation for the consolidation plan of the Huntington Bank consolidation plan at 3944 and 3952 Washington Road, and to include the four conditions outlined in staff's memo.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So the next one would be a, actually approval. Let me see. Township, Huntington, approved by, site plan approval by Huntington. I'm sorry. I will make a motion that the site plan be approved by the planning official in accordance with staff's memo dated October 7th, 2022, including the, is it nine?
Oh, fourteen.
Fourteen. Requirements outlined in staff's memo.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I'll have now.
Two, one. Anything else on the agenda, sir?
That concludes our, our meeting for tonight.
Meeting adjourned.